I don't have to tell you things are bad. Everybody knows things are bad. Everybody's out of work or scared of losing their job. The dollar buys a nickel's worth. Banks are going bust. Shopkeepers keep a gun under the counter. Punks are running wild in the street and there's nobody anywhere who seems to know what to do and there's no end to it. The air is unfit to breathe and our food is unfit to eat. We sit watching our TVs while some local newscaster tells us that today we had fifteen homicides and sixty-three violent crimes, as if that's the way it's supposed to be. We know things are bad, worse than bad. It's like everything everywhere is going crazy so we don't go out anymore. We sit in the house and slowly the world we're living in is getting smaller and all we say is, "Please, at least leave us alone in our living rooms. Let me have my toaster and my TV and my steel-belted radios and I won't say anything. Just leave us alone." Well, I'm not gonna leave you alone. I want you to get mad. I don't want you to protest. I don't want you to riot. I don't want you to write to your congressman because I wouldn't know what to tell you to write. I don't know what to do about the depression and the inflation and the Russians and the crime in the street. All I know is that first, you've got to get mad. You've got to say, "I'm a human being and my life has value." So, I want you to get up now. I want all of you to get up out of your chairs. I want you to get up right now and go to the window, open it, and stick your head out and yell, "I'm as mad as hell and I'm not gonna take this anymore."
Approve of the June eleventh special meeting minutes?
Say the same. I'll make a move to untable the June eleventh.
Thank you.
Second.
Move from table. Eugene, second by Dan. Now entertain that motion.
So move.
Motion by Dan, second by Eugene.
I'll take a roll call on that untabled.
Alright, thank you. Roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan, yes. Mr. Hughes, abstained. Mr. Muggles, yes. Mr. Webb, yes. Mr. Fland, yes. Lance, yes. Piper, yes.
Alright, now, I will entertain a motion to approve. Oh, entertain, yes, a motion to approve.
Second, I'll make the motion.
We're on a roll today. Motion by Dan, second by Eugene. Roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan, yes. Mr. Hughes, abstained. Mr. Muggles, yes. Mr. Webb, yes. Mr. Fland, yes. Lance, yes. Piper, yes.
Alright, now we'll move on to approval of the June twenty-fifth county council meeting minutes.
A move, second.
Motion by Dan, second by Eugene. Roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan, yes. Mr. Hughes, yes. Mr. Muggles, yes. Mr. Webb, yes. Mr. Fland, yes. Lance, yes. Piper, yes.
Alright, we'll move on to our transfer and appropriation agenda. Starting off in county general, prosecutor, one thirty-seven, one eighteen, one oh one deputy prosecutor, negative five thousand, five hundred, thirty-seven and sixty-one cents. One fifteen, one oh one deputy prosecutor, negative two thousand, six hundred, fifty-six and eighty-nine cents. Two twenty, operating supplies, positive eight thousand, one hundred, ninety-four, fifty cents. Total transfers zero. I'd like the motion to approve, second. Motion by Ryan, second by Dan. We had a very long, fun discussion about computer replacement in finance committee. Would you like to share what you have provided?
Lisa Carr from the prosecutor's office, so I'm asking to transfer funds. We had received a request, uh, an email from Jim Pluke and IT telling us that the Microsoft Office was going to go out of date next year. So, I'm, that each license is three hundred and three dollars and fifty cents. So, I have asked to transfer money into my operating supplies so that I have money to purchase the licenses. Um, there was discussion that, um, IT's supposed to be getting you guys some kind of a proposal or a report of what the needs actually are. So, I asked that the money could go ahead and be transferred into my budget and I would let it sit there, um, depending on what we needed for the office.
So, the discussion was around, um, Jim Pluke is gonna be providing kind of a three- to five-year plan that, um, of projects and things that, that he feels need to be addressed that probably some of which have been on the books for many years. But the larger discussion was about the fact that we've got disparate computer systems within the computer, um, hardware in different departments because now every department is basically responsible for their own things. Um, which means we've got some machines on old versions of Windows. We've got things on different versions of Microsoft Office. We've got a lot of disparity. And we had a discussion, uh, Jim sent a message out about security issues at other counties and things that have been happening. Um, this is one of those vulnerabilities, the fact that we have disparity amongst operating systems within the computers in and of themselves, which is, uh, to me, an unacceptable, you know, risk to, to the county. So, I'm gonna, I've been working to talk to Jim about that. He's gonna be presenting that. We said, basically said she would, we would allocate the money, hold it for a minute and we'll, um, she'll hold off until we have some idea of, uh, where we might be going beyond that. Because I do think that there needs to be an asset list that shows where each computer in the county is currently from an operating system standpoint, making a determination. Because I think for budget, that's gonna have to be something we discuss. And that's not something we can think of.
She has the money in her budget. We're just moving it there in the event that she needs it. It's there right now. I did not budget for this in my twenty-twenty-five budget.
Yeah, so she wants to spend, she needs, wants to spend it this year, which is understandable and it may just be a thirty-day thing. But, um, so, I think it's, I'm fine with you holding on to it. Because if we do nothing, then she's gonna have to spend the money. So, I don't object to that for a second. I don't see, if just a false waiting, why she would have to spend the money. There's no difference of whether the money sits there and we transfer it when she gets the invoice from Jim from telling us exactly how much we need versus us transferring it now and it's just sitting there. Um, I, I guess I, I recognize the importance of, um, getting the systems on the same page like Matt was explaining. Um, I guess my only objection to it would be the fact that putting the money in advance and just letting it sit there rather than you come to us in two months and say, "Hey, here's the invoice. This is what it is. I need to make this transfer." And then us doing the transfer then.
I did get a quote from Jim. It was three hundred and three dollars and fifty cents per computer, per license, I'm sorry. Um, I have twenty-seven computers in my office, so this is anticipating updating what I currently have that's not on my office twenty-twenty-one and anticipating the needs of the computers I'll be purchasing this year.
And this is an ask that I made of you, not, you would have went and transferred the money and done this, right?
With, with your permission, yes. Yes.
So, let me, help me understand. If you've got the invoice, what's the point of the hold? Just when you finally can't purchase it?
Not an invoice. It's an, it was a quote. Um, the perk, the reason to hold it is until Matt has a chance to, or you're, you guys have a chance to talk to Jim Pluke and see what their proposal is for the whole county.
Yeah, we're gonna, I'm waiting for the same plan. I get the plan. I just don't know why.
Well, either way.
Pay up the money until it's ready to do it.
The money stays in her account. It's just moving to a different line. So, if we get to go ahead, if we decide after we talk, Matt talks to Jim, that she needs to go ahead and do it, it's already in that line item, ready to go.
Which for this year is probably what's gonna happen. So, but, uh, the point was, I would like to see when we have relative to the overall potential spend that we're gonna need to make on this exact topic that Lisa's put, put up as much as anything else. So, it's really just a, a request. The other question. You can approve the transfer and she can go ahead and do it, but, um, preferably just let's see what we're set in. I'm gonna make a determination of how much money that's gonna be. My other question would be, the money coming from the two deputy prosecutor positions, have those positions been filled?
One of them has been filled. It was extra money in that line. Um, there's another one that has not been filled and it was extra money in that line to this point.
From the, from the previous months that they went until, correct?
Yes, there's plenty of money in that line if I hire someone today to pay them through the rest of the year.
Good job on using your own money to make this work. Now, in regards to the Microsoft, uh, how many computers are you anticipating needing?
Twenty-seven. We have some laptops. We have interns. We have a receptionist. So, um, I've got some.
Wait, so wait, you're gonna come to us and want twenty-seven new computers?
No, no, no. These are computers that I currently have in my office that are running.
You also indicated that you're gonna be coming to us wanting a, a budget for new computers.
No, no, I am not. I have money in my computer budget currently and I need to purchase a couple of computers this year.
The broader conversation around IT is just that I know that the commissioners have pushed it back to the department heads. Each one of them are formulating a plan of their own to try to deal with computer replacements, operating system replacements, updates in the office, et cetera, copy machines, any other IT things. And to me, that's completely the wrong approach with which we should be purchasing, um, IT assets. So, I think the broader discussion needs to be had with the commissioners about what our growth plan needs to be for twenty-twenty-five because ultimately, we're at risk in a lot of different ways. Uh, we know, uh, there's some issues with people not taking the proper training for, um, you know, email spam and things that can, that can put us at risk of, of being targeted. Uh, two counties recently in Indiana had that happen. You know, one of those hits in, in this county is under significant financial risk. So, I think that the discussion needs to be had that that plan for pushing everything out to the departments to be responsible for their own things is a unnecessary risk, not to mention is probably a financial, um, it's not helping us financially. Is, is your position that this upgrade would, um, help solidify their, their returns to a, a ransomware attack? When they come from the past, or is it just to get them all over the stuff on the same page? Theoretically, that's true because they're running full Windows operating system, not the current, which would be the better choice. For our security, more specifically, the fact is we have disparity across our network on different computers, right? So, one's running one, one's running another, one's running another. That's, to me, a gap. And I've been in IT a long time. Um, I've talked to some people. I've got, uh, somebody who's gonna come in and probably do an assessment for us to try to determine what those vulnerabilities may be just right off the gate. And then we'll, we'll tackle it once I get Jim's list. So, it's, it seems like you're, you're pretty well versed in this and I still have a AOL email. I'm gonna. Just kidding. So, this is in our request, so I appreciate you seeing you just hanging on for a little bit.
Alright, any further questions? Roll call please.
Ask Matt a question since you're, are in this field. Does the price that Mr. Pluke has spit out for each one of these, does that seem like a reasonable amount? Or can the county get a better discount by buying in larger quantities? I, I couldn't say necessarily. Um, she's got twenty-seven in her department. I don't know how many computers we actually have in this organization at this point, but we should be buying in bulk and there should be consistently updated together and everyone should be on the same thing. That's, to me, most important. And then, you know, how do we buy from Microsoft? That's some other stories, which I haven't met enough.
I will add that when you're buying just the soft, pardon me, the software, it is more expensive than if you have like three sixty-five, but with three sixty-five, you're paying an annual fee. Uh, with this, it's just the software and the updates that come along when they come along. So, um.
That is true. We're not paying subscription. We're paying as, as you go. So, Lisa's gonna buy a three hundred dollar piece of operating system for that computer in three, four years. They're gonna be paying another three hundred dollar, whatever the number is at that time. So, is that better or worse than paying, you know, thirty bucks a month for an operating system for that particular machine when you know which current's gonna remain the same? Those are part of the discussions I think need to be had. Thank you.
Anything else? Roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan, yes. Mr. Hughes, yes. Lance, yes. Mr. Muggles, yes. Mr. Webb, yes. Mr. Fland, yes. Piper, yes.
Thank you, thank you. Public defender, one thirty-nine. One fifty-six, one oh one investigator, negative four thousand, five hundred. One seventy-four life insurance, positive one thousand, seven hundred. One seventy-five disability insurance, positive two thousand, eight hundred. Total transfers zero.
I'll make the motion to approve. That on, second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan. Do we have any questions on this one? I will note that these monies should get you through the rest of the year on these council lines.
Have a quick question. I'm just curious why this wouldn't have been included in your budget or the amount? Can you kind of educate me on if either it wasn't included or if enough wasn't included?
Enough wasn't included.
What would make that change? From what we budgeted, why would we be twenty-eight hundred short? Do they like raise the rates in like the middle of the year?
No, I've not budgeted them correctly.
Just a, just a simple error?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we, uh, we have money from our investigator line because our investigator retired at the end of January and with the salary surveys and we redid his, uh, redid his job description a little bit. We were kind of waiting to see how that was gonna go. Yeah, if we hire investigator today, I still have money to pay him for the rest of, him over, I'm sorry, for the rest of the year. So, this is, uh, the money that's been sitting there.
I'm glad that, that's the error was recognized that you guys were able to find the money in your budget. So, it didn't have to be an additional appropriation. So, I didn't jump that.
Any additional questions? Hearing none. Roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan, yes. Mr. Hughes, yes. Lance, yes. Mr. Muggles, yes. Mr. Webb, yes. Mr. Fland, yes. Piper, yes.
Thank you, thank you. Auditor, one twenty-six. One oh two, one oh one chief deputy auditor, positive one hundred, ninety-five dollars. One oh four, one oh one federal deputy, positive one thousand, one hundred, seventy-seven dollars. One oh six, one oh one head bookkeeper, negative three thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars. Uh, one oh seven, one oh one senior courtroom deputy, positive one dollar. One oh eight, one oh one finance deputy, negative six thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. One twelve, one oh one claims deputy, positive one dollar. One seventeen, one oh one tax sale courtroom deputy, negative eight thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars. One eighteen, one oh one abatement exemption deputy, positive one dollar. One nineteen, one oh one tax sale deputy, negative seven thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars. One twenty, one oh one tax sale courtroom exemption deputy, positive nine hundred, eighty-eight dollars. One twenty-one, one oh one finance deputy, negative six hundred, forty-four dollars. One ninety-eight, one oh one part-time, positive twenty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars. Total transfers zero.
Make the motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan. Uh, during finance committee, Tanya, who's president, was explaining this to us and it was a lot of cleanup um, and lines that she found while doing the deep dive into budgets for next year. Um, if you have any additional questions?
I do.
Yep.
I have a couple of questions. The, the amounts that are being taken out, um, uh, hell, I lost them. There are quite a bit of amounts, um, for employees. Are those open employee positions and that's why those amounts are there to be able to be transferred? Some of them are. I guess the majority of them. Well, there are two open positions that she came open the last six days. So, no would not, would be positions to open. And the reason we moved that money to part-time is to keep those services derived of public. So, we're moving that full-time money that's on the balance on those, uh, secret line items to the part-time services. Services to the public. So, is, is this the money that would be allocated for those full-time positions for the rest of the year? Now, just from the period of, the time of which the position came open to the date of, of which we've, uh, filed these, this, this transfer. And then my other question, because we plan to hire full-time people, we're gonna find someone that accepts positions for the pay of the offering. This is going to, part-time, twenty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars. My question is, is this part-time, is any of this twenty-three thousand dollars going to, uh, consulting, uh, out-of-state, um, contract employee of taxes? We're not allowed to do that. It can only be part-time help. Hey, I'm sorry. We can only pay part-time help out of part-time money. Consulting money has to be paid off contractual services. Okay. I thought, I, maybe I was wrong on that. I thought when, when that was done, that there was five thousand dollars allotted in part-time money. And I remember sharing concerns about commissioners always stepping the boundaries and, and agreeing on a thirty-dollar an hour, um, rate when we had settled on a twenty-dollar an hour rate for part-time employees. And I believe at the time, Jessica, you said, "If they run out, they have to come back to the council and we can always say no." And I followed up by saying, "But we don't ever say no." I thought that was in part-time money. You're saying that was in contractual services? Your answer now is, no, we're just, that's what I'm trying to get at. That's what I understood was it was in this. That wasn't contractual services. That was, that privilege for that was considered, uh, for part-time help. I meant with contractual services. But that, that, that conversation that day was for, for part-time help. That was specifically related to that. Part-time help, correct?
That wasn't our, I think we were working on updating the salary ordinance.
I know, but I feel like that's.
Which would be separate from a new contractual service, if I recall correctly.
I mean, in two different things, because I just, I just said I thought it was part-time help, but you said it was contractual services. And you said.
First, you're.
Again, I never said it was contractual services. You said that. So, is any of this twenty-three thousand dollars gonna pay towards the out-of-state, um, guidance that we receive from the employee? Okay, I'll say it again. We are not allowed to do that. So, the answer is no. Okay, thank you for being clear. Okay, so what exactly does this twenty-three thousand pay? For part-time help, provide services to the public until we have full-time people in. We're just probably trying to find full-time people because what we're paying. So, we can't stop providing services to the public. I just, so we're using that money to, to pay people to, to provide the services. But if we're paying them for part-time, why wouldn't we just hire them for full-time? They're all full-time help. They're all, they're full-time. I mean, we want it, they want it. So, this, uh, twenty-three thousand, uh, that pays for some people that have already done it, puts, and then also puts money in your account to pay people like for next month? So, they can continue providing services until the part-time full-time help, so? And Tanya had mentioned, wanna move it into all, all into part-time until it's needed and we'll go back to county general at the end of the year if it's not used, right?
I just have a couple of tiny funds that don't get used.
I guess the only other question I would have is how many part-time employees do we have? Two, two. Alright, thank you.
Any additional questions? Alright, roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan, yes. Mr. Hughes, yes. Mr. Lance, yes. Mr. Muggles, yes. Mr. Webb, yes. Mr. Fland, yes. Mr. Piper, yes.
Moving outside of county general. Don't use your fee fund, two fourteen. Two twenty, operating supplies, negative two thousand, four hundred, seventy-six and twenty-nine cents. Three ten, professional services, positive two thousand, four hundred, seventy-six and twenty-nine cents. Total transfers zero.
I'll make the motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan. Okay, this is a, a fund outside of county general, just appropriating the monies. Alright, Emily Anderson, court administrator, uh, when the auditor's office did the conversion of all the line items, they assumed that this was to purchase drug screens. They put it all in the two-hundred series, when in fact, we use it for two different things. One is to purchase drug screens. The other is to have DCCC conduct drug screen. So, I needed most of the money go into three-hundred series, but they didn't know that. So, that's why I'm asking for the transfer into the three-tens. We can pay DCCC for conducting the drug screen. So, it's just literally a simple transfer to get that cleaned up. Will this be cleaned up for year twenty-five budget? Yes, right. This is just because that transfer did in the middle of the year. Yeah.
We're not, no longer requiring applicants to pay for their own drug screens, are we? This is just for like, um.
This is for probation. This is for clients in the probation office and we cover that cost. Yeah. Any additional questions? Hearing none. Roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan, yes. Mr. Hughes, yes. Lance, yes. Mr. Muggles, yes. Mr. Webb, yes. Mr. Fland, yes. Piper, yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Got one on the agenda. This one is in county general. Public defender, one thirty-nine. One fifty-six, one oh one investigator, negative seven thousand, seven hundred, seventy-five. One thirteen, attorney fees, county employees, positive seven thousand, seven hundred, seventy-five. Total transfers zero. Make the motion to approve. Second. Motion by Ryan, second by Dan. Uh, wanna go ahead and explain this one for us?
Sure. Uh, again, we have money left over in the investigator line. Uh, but we pay our attorneys, uh, when they are doing a murder trial or a, uh, appeal. Murder trial and F1s, they get extra pay on those trials if they last over three days. Uh, every F1 murder trial lasts over thirty-three days, but, or I should say, ninety-nine percent. Uh, they do get a stipend out of that fund or they get paid out of that fund, uh, because they're out of their office for most of the time a week. And for the time they're out of their office for a week, they lose a lot of money from their private practice. So, they do get, um, extra pay if they do one of those trials. The trials have been crazy this year. Uh, we've had one, sometimes two a week, and then we may skip a week and we may have one and then maybe the next week we have two. They've been crazy and, uh, a lot of them are the murders that happened, um, and, well, some of them are actually still the, uh, celebration, the Mutsi celebration. And we have a lot of dealing resulting in death cases, uh, that, you know, are long and arduous. So, we, that's why these trials are going and, uh, frankly, I'm going to be back next month asking for money. I only put fifty thousand dollars in those fees on that line item and, um, in years past, the fifty thousand has gotten me through, uh, a year. And this year, we've earned it. Um, we'll be asking for more money next month and I will email you all, uh, with detail. Um, reasons why we're asking with some stats and, and data with these trials. And of course, every trial gets appealed.
Uh, you had mentioned the state requires a hundred and ten dollar rate, right?
Uh, no, not unless we have flat rates for these, uh.
Michelle, Michelle, what did you say that they get the, the extra money for from their way from the practice? What was it?
Um, that it has to be a murder trial or a felony one trial. And most of the dealing resulting in deaths are felony one trials.
And this is in addition to the fifty thousand dollar salary, I guess?
So, they also get money, uh, when they file a brief on appeal.
Are all of their hours, um, recorded? In other words, they send you an invoice and that?
Not for those cases, uh.
Paper trails, I know.
The paper trail they have to give us, uh, because obviously if they're in trial for three, four, or five days. because obviously if they're in trial for three, four, or five days, uh, we know those hours. Uh, but if someone is charged with murder and it comes trial time, and that person chooses to take a plea, uh, they have to turn in, uh, invoice to us, and they get a little money, uh, on those, they don't get like five thousand or whatever. But if, you know, they've been preparing for a murder case for a year, and that person ends up pleading guilty, uh, I think it's, I wish I had a shame permit. But they have to turn in that they had at least ten hours on the case, which isn't difficult. And then they get a little, um, money for that.
So you're saying there's a financial incentive for a public defender to take the case to trial, so they plead out? Yeah. What's that like?
No, not when they can be in their office making two fifty an hour.
Probably make fifty grand. That's what all of these fees add up to. I don't remember us talking about these fees when we were discussing the negotiations to increase the salaries up to fifty thousand. We probably did, but I don't remember it. Seems like it adds up.
I mean, most people, most of our, I shouldn't say most, a lot of our attorneys aren't even, uh, qualified to do F-ones and murders. Um, for that matter, level one through four. Um, so these cases are very tedious cases and require hundreds of hours to prepare for. Meeting with witnesses and dealing with the discovery, the voluminous discovery. You get, you know, we might have five hours of video or more, twenty hours of video that they have to watch. Um, and they have to watch every minute to catch, see if there's something that, you know, they didn't know about, or preparing for a level one or murder is very different than preparing for a level four. Dealing, okay, whatever.
Do we get the forty percent reimbursement on this?
Yes, we do.
Any additional questions?
So the murder, murder trials are up roughly like double?
Level ones and murders?
And these are criminals that can't afford an attorney. Sorry, actually. I'll tell you guys.
Any additional questions?
Like, this is weird, but. Can you predict this year's crime rates, murder rates, anything that's happening for next year? This is.
Can I respond to that? It's not that the murder rates, so like, it's just that these are the trials that are going, right? So we've had a ton of murder trials go, a ton of level one felonies go. We have no control what trial goes.
Yeah.
It's up to the attorneys what they choose to go forward with on their trial. It's just the timing of it. And this year, it's been a ton of murder and a ton of level ones.
Crimes are happening this year and being prosecuted this year?
No, these are old ones. Some of them are from, at the time, yes, some of them are from twenty-four. So like, it's just all catching up, and now these are the ones that are moving forward. It seems to be the level one and murders that the prosecutor and defense decide to try. When you go into a court, you can see their calendar is stacked with, you know, sometimes fifteen trials on Monday. And then they narrow it down to which case that they are saying, okay, we're gonna go with this case. This is what we're going to go for, or this is what we're prepared to do, or our client's ready to go. And it, and it seems to have been murder and level one all year. So it's just happening to fall that way. Which I can get you stats on what's gone this year.
No, that's okay, I was just.
If that helps her.
I'm trying to help her next year if she thinks that the lineup looks as bad as it did this year.
It's really hard to predict because it just really depends on what cases end up going.
Yeah.
She's right, you can go to any judge, uh, in our system, at least you can go to any judge and look at their calendar, start Mondays, and they may have fifteen jury trials. That's it. And they have to, yeah. And so.
And we have had a ton.
I would recommend that when, whatever the budget is for next year. I'm sure you're well aware of, um, amongst your group of attorneys or public defenders, which ones are qualified to handle these cases? Being as that public defender position is likely a stepping stone out of law school. An attorney can get their three or four years' experience, and then go on to a law firm. They probably only got so many, so I would budget accordingly that those specific attorneys are probably gonna be saddled with those cases, uh, the majority of next year. That way, you don't have to ask for, you said you're gonna have to come back and get some more. I know this year's was a big increase, and it probably, to the council, they're like, wow, that's fifty thousand dollars more. I know that's because we didn't have any the year before because of COVID. So it did look like a big, big increase. So I don't think there'll be too big of a jump from this year's, but I would definitely increase it.
I imagine it's already been submitted, so.
I hope you submit it.
Um, I really didn't, because we submitted them in last, last pay period. I mean, I looked at what I had in my line in last pay period. I looked before, and I had like thirty thousand in there. I'm like, okay, well then seventeen thousand dollars worth of claims came in for last pay period. So because we did have like two or three trials during then, and we had a couple of people plead appeals. So it is so hard to predict. I thought, yeah, I'm good till next month or whatever, and then I pay out seventeen thousand in claims. Never done that before since I've been here. So, yeah, you cannot predict what trials are gonna go. Um, I, I have a sort of feeling, uh, because I hear the attorneys talk around our office, uh, you know, that it looks like this one's gonna have to go. But I mean, I could look at the calendar and write down every trial with its schedule. And somebody may say, oh, this one's never gonna go, and then all of a sudden, it's going. So, I mean, I wish I could predict better, and I predict it too, Kenny, trust me.
I'm gonna press the ball.
All right, roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan, yes. Hughes, yes. Vance, yes. Spockel, yes. Webb, yes. Webb, yes. Piper, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any appropriations? Starting in county general. clerk, one twenty-five, one thirty-five stipend, two thousand five hundred for a total of two thousand five.
Um, I'd like to interrupt for a second. Did you, did you table this last?
Didn't table, the votes need to come off the table.
Yeah, so these should, these shouldn't be new appropriations, right? They should be.
Have to be listed.
Or somebody would have to make a motion to remove them from the table. That's generally the way we do a table business.
Right.
I'll make the motion to remove them from the table? Second?
Motion by Dan, second by Bill to take off the table. Roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan, yes. Hughes, yes. Vance, yes. Spockel, yes. Webb, no. Mr. Webb, no. Piper, yes. So we gotta talk about both these at the same time?
Hmm.
Similar to last month's?
Were they ta, well, I don't think they were tabled together, so they'll need to be discussed separately.
Okay.
All right. Let me read the next one. Well, we need to take a, I need a, a motion to approve now that it's off the table.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
I'll need a motion to approve now that it's off the table.
Hold on. Second.
About you, Dan?
Yes.
Okay, motion by Bill, second by Dan. All right, discussion.
Okay. May I start?
Yes, ma'am.
We have somebody from the clerk's office here to present them. Uh, I think they're downstairs, and then we did the, uh. We could watch last month's videos today.
Are you, come on out there, Will.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ryan. Oh, yeah. So, uh, thank you for coming up and, uh, representing the clerk's office. So, um, we talked about this last month. This was presented to us last month, uh, as a, as a stipend that the state made it available for, um, the council, if we so, um, seem fit to award both. I'm, I'm gonna talk about it and, and do those, even though we're only talking about the clerk, the clerk and the auditor, the twenty-five hundred dollar stipends, um, only during election years. And I, um, strenuously objected to this last month for multiple reasons. And since it seems like we're on repeat this month, I'll just repeat what I said last month. And last month, what I said was, we had an extremely difficult negotiation to get our budget last year to an acceptable number where we didn't have to borrow any money. And we did that by county employees not taking raises. The majority of them didn't get anything. I'd say most people in this room didn't get anything. We did that by our sheriff stepping up to the podium and forfeiting his mandatory salary increase. Double digits, like, I'm gonna go up top, like twelve thousand bucks, something like that. Forfeited it. That's not just one year, that's compounding, that's year over year over year over year. As long as he sheriff, he forfeited it so we could make our budget. And we made our budget. There was a lot of tough decisions, but we made our budget. So for us to come in here now, when all of those county employees didn't get anything, and our sheriff forfeited his salary, for us to turn around and give out stipends to elected officials, I kind of feel like it's a middle finger to everybody who did what they had to do to ensure that we could reach our budget. So for that reason, I'm gonna object to this, and I'm actually gonna take it even further than that. If we pass it, I'm gonna make the motion that we return Sheriff Skinner his money that he forfeited last year. And I'm also gonna make the motion that we give every county employee a five hundred dollar stipend as well. Because if two elected officials deserve twenty-five hundred dollar stipends, then damn it, everybody else deserves it as well. That's what I got to say about it. Thank you for representing the court.
That's right.
It's unfair for us to stand there, but, um, I wouldn't say it quite dramatically, uh, but I do think this is something that can be done within budget time.
And there's one confirmation too, that the stipend goes back to the clerk and not employees of the office, right? It just would go back to him. Um.
Right.
And it would be used for him, so, okay.
I just can't imagine, um, people at the legislature in their, uh, infinite wisdom, thank you, um, signaling out a couple of, um, people, uh, they work hard, and I don't think anybody's going to deny that. But I do think that we have a lot of people that work hard that are department heads. And, uh, it would appear to me that we would now make probably, obviously, two people happy to get a stipend. And at the same time, um, have several hundred people kind of scratching their head, or at least an department head scratching their heads, and probably start to come back to us next month and the month after saying, hey, you know what? I worked hard, um, uh, I went above and beyond, and these are, uh, the reasons why I'm here asking for, uh, an appropriation, uh, the same as a couple other people may or may not be given. And I just think that's a poor precedent for, uh, future.
Yeah, I think you've really hit on it. House Bill thirteen twenty-eight, this is what happens. It is that some council in Smokestack County, Indiana, wanted to give good old Sam a, a stipend, and their council attorney said, oh, you can't do that. So they went to the legislature and stuck this in a bill. And the legislature really is, is talking out both sides of their mouth because they said that we set the salaries. But now they're setting stipend about for a clerk, and then when the, after the clerk's got it, then the auditor association said, well, we ought to get some too. So it's, I'm gonna talk to our legislators, this kind of thing shouldn't ever appear again. Uh, this is not the right way to, to, uh, determine any kind of compensation for elected officials.
They like those unfunded mandates. You know, for me personally, I would really, I really, really hope, I mean, we don't know what our max levy numbers are or anything for next year, but, pardon me, um, I'd really like to see us be able to give everybody something in salary increases next year. And, you know, they're, you know, five grand doesn't sound like a whole lot, but that, that does go to enough for, you know, a few employees, and I, I really like to see us, I mean, we work so hard not to appropriate anything. I mean, obviously, there's been some appropriations we've had to make, but everyone works so hard as we asked you to. I'm at the end of last budget, to try not to make appropriations, so we could try to get some of these salaries adjusted after the salary study that we hired someone to do for us, so. I don't know where I stand on that, so. You have any other questions or comments?
No, I will state that on the clerk one particularly, there is a language in that House Bill bill, I think, that stipulates that it's really meant to try to cover if, if you don't have an election deputy or whatever the title is to, to run the elections, which I think we have a deputy election person. And, 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 uh, Rick and all the prior staffs spend enormous amount of dollars during election years. And I'm, you know, it's not just being able to have all, I know this bit, the auditor, we talked about it, finance committee. At one time, there was one auditor a year coming, coming from the outside. Now I have six or seven. Tremendous increase in line here. This isn't the way to.
I do have one more comment. Um, after hearing, and obviously we're not voting, but after hearing everybody's position, it kind of doesn't really seem like there's too much support for it. So my question is, this was tabled last month, but it's on the agenda this month. So if this gets, well, I guess we could say, uh, let's just say theoretically, if something got tabled again, would it repeatedly show up on the agenda until it's voted down? Or would someone just have to bring it off the table as like, you know, we have new business, old business, table business? Or would it be on the agenda each time? Um, it'll be on the agenda, and we have to go bring it off the table every time, every month. We can both not bring it off the table, so, okay. All right, thanks for clarifying that.
Uh, this one has been removed from the table, and now it's open for vote. We have a motion and a second. So I think we've answered all of our questions and had all of our comments, so roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan, no. Hughes, no. Vance, no. Spockel, no. Webb, no. Webb, no. Piper, no.
All right, moving on.
Does it bring the auditors off the table? Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Matt to remove the auditor's request off the table. Roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan, no.
It's removed off the table.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Hughes, yes. Vance, yes. Spockel, yes. Mr. Webb, staying stiff with my nose. Webb, no. Piper, yes.
All right, motion to approve.
Hold on. Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Matt for discussion.
And I want to agree with, reiterate what Mr. Hughes said, and that is, this isn't the way to handle it.
Any other further comments or statements on this request?
The auditors, I'd just like to make a comment. I sent all of you the email, listing all the different parties for that. They're, they're completely naked, talking like every night, so. The facts of the fact.
Did you add this to your budget for next year as well?
I don't re-moldify it, there's just so many times I can't tell if it is or not. Well, they'd have to be different, because this is only can be done during election year, so it would have to just be.
That's for the clerk.
That's for the clerk.
That's for the clerk. You're on the auditor.
And they're not tied to the same standards. Okay, that's weird. No, because we don't conduct elections. Well, I was curious why the auditors was in there at all, so I just thought they were linked up with the. I think it's, I mean, I talked to Leslie, uh, about this. Um, I'm sure all of you did. But the reason I gave me is because of the workflow that these clauses require. That's the reason they, they supported that, uh, uh, potential increase for the stipend for those budget losses.
Yeah, I think it's valid that you guys are under, under arrest when it comes to the amount of auditing and the detail with which the state and particularly in others are coming at you with continued, um, requests and changes and all the stuff that goes with it. So, uh, totally agree with that, but I just, again, think that we give it this much of time. And I, I'd also add that I have no doubt that, that those offices put in tremendous amounts of work.
And I, I'd also add that, I have no doubt that, that those offices put in tremendous amounts of work, a lot of human reason, there's a lot of turnover. Just a reminder that, you know, as elected officials, we seek these positions out. No one comes knocking on our door and asks us to do it, we asked us to be put in these positions. That's all I have to say.
Alright, anything else? Roll call please.
It's flagging, no. It's use, no. Dance, no. It's web, no. It's web, no. Web, no. It's diaper, no.
Alright, moving outside to county general.
Adult user fee fund, two fourteen. One forty-seven, support staff, uh, two hundred fifty-nine dollars for a total of two hundred fifty-nine dollars.
Make motion three three, second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan, Emily, let you explain this one.
Uh, Emily Anderson, Court Administrator. So, uh, as we all know, we have been working on the past. Well, since Jeff took the position of chief to unify the probation departments and make it more. I guess utilize our employees in a way that, uh, is more efficient. It's always been a unified department, but there's always been adult and juvenile. But it is a unified department, we're trying to make it more unified. Um, we've always had this discrepancy between. Support staff salary and adult and support staff salary and juvenile. So if you look at the salary for support staff and adult, it's thirty-six to eighty-nine. If you look at the one in juvenile, it's thirty-five, seven, twenty-eight. Why that's been that way, we don't know, can't tell you. But their workload is the same. It's the same job, it's support staff. And we have cross-trained and are cross-trained, but they can all cover both offices because it is unified. So we feel that it's time to make that the same. So we put it into user fees to, to bring it up to the other, um, salary. We also put it in the budget next year in both county general and user fees, because we don't know what you guys are gonna wanna do with that. Um, so right now, we'd like to just do it currently to get them up, and we've been talking about it forever. Um, because we have cross-trained everybody and we want them all to behave the same way. That's what this two hundred fifty-nine dollars is, get them through the end of the year.
Uh, just show questions for, for later, Jeff?
What can these fees be used for?
Anything to run a probation department, salaries, programming. They would like fourteen more for programming, but we have taken on a lot of salaries and benefits because back when. Things were tough, we took on more of that, um, to help the county general side. I will tell you that this year, we're gonna start telling you, we need to start taking some of the benefits off because it's killing our budget, but, um.
What do you mean by that?
Because the benefits keep going up, the rates. So we can keep the salaries on there, but the benefits keep increasing and it keeps cutting into our, our budget and our fees are. Although they've increased, those benefits have increased and it's starting to cut our bottom line. So we put, we took those on to help the county out at that time and we kept them. But now it's getting to the point where it's starting to cut our bottom line. Um, but we took, it can be used for anything, but mostly you wanna use it for programming, obviously. And it's kind of cut into that because we can't use it for programming because two hundred thousand of it is for salary and benefits, most of it being benefits. Right, so you always wanna have enough for your current year and another year on top of that. That's what we always have in there. That's what I was, was thought, let's make sure you have enough in there for, for a bad year.
Yeah, we have programming, does that mean? Yeah, so, uh, Jeff answers Chief probation officer, so just kind of foreshadow budget hearings, uh, when we talk about programming in the department. There's a lot of things we could be doing with the funds that we're currently using out of our user fees to pay for benefits, health insurance for employees. So for example, we could institute, one thing that's been on pile on our list is institute a field unit. Uh, our probation departments do not have, uh, capacity to deploy a field unit to go do, uh, checks on like high-risk offenders. Uh, sex offenders, things like that. Uh, there was some grant funds back some many years ago, we're in coordination with, uh. Sheriff's, uh, reserve deputies that we're able to do, go intervene and, and do some checks on like high-risk offenders. But there's equipment needs for that, there's training needs for that, there's, uh, another example would be. Uh, we have a lot of juveniles in placement all over the state of Indiana. Some of them are in different time zones. My officers have to go see them in accordance with state standards once per month. Um, so our mileage budget is really, uh, you know, taking a beating. Uh, officers and staff that don't like using their own personal vehicles do wear and tear. We could perhaps purchase a, a vehicle or lease a vehicle somehow so we could go see those kids and we don't, we cut costs that way. Um, there's a lot of interventions we could use for, uh, you know, we have the jump program on the adult side, we're looking to, uh, build capacity in that program and. Uh, institute some, uh, easy entry employment opportunities for individuals that. Might have a little tougher time getting a, a typical job with a, with an outside employer, um, you know, cleaning up the community, doing beautification projects. Those are the type of things we'd like to use our user fee funds for as opposed to necessarily pay for, you know. Salary and benefits for officers, which a lot of that, like Emily stated, goes back many, many. Sometimes decades ago, uh, where the probation department took that cost on, obviously. Health insurance over the years, you know, in twenty twenty-four is not the same it was even in twenty fourteen. Much less two, the year two thousand when the costs were much lower, so it's just not really sustainable model. Uh, going forward for the probation department, keep incurring those costs because there's a point in time where. There, you know, we're gonna be operating in a deficit and then we're gonna have to figure out what to do at that time, so if we could just kind of preemptively get ahead of some of these things. Um, this issue with the two support staff, again, like Emily stated, historically, the departments were compartmentalized. Adult, juvenile, you have two staff doing the same job, same qualifications and everything, and for whatever reason. An artifact of a bygone era, uh, there's a disparity in their salary, so. I just had a, a, uh, long-term support staff, uh, retire at the beginning of July. And the adult side, I have two new individuals in these roles, uh, they both just started, so it's a good opportunity to kind of get everybody at parity. And then when we head into budget time, we can kind of, you know, address whatever salary issues.
And I do wanna let you know, I keep a close eye every time I do budget on where we're at. What the next budget's gonna cost and how much it's gonna leave us even with collections in the next year, and I have seen it gradually decrease. And I told them this year, I said, we've gotta really start thinking about letting the council know, we've got to find a different way to do this because it's not gonna sustain. It's not something new, it's just something we gotta start looking at. It's not something we're asking this year to happen, but it's something that we're gonna have to talk about. In the next few years, um, that we gotta do something different with this fund.
I have a question for the auditor, excuse the auditor's office. I mean miscellaneous revenue in, in this fund at two hundred and forty thousand.
That's not right.
Is that year-to-date or is that for the full year?
Uh, well, about twenty, twenty thousand a month.
That's what we projected, uh, revenue generation in the user fee account per year. We estimate, uh, we projected a twenty thousand per month. I can tell you over the past sixteen years. Our mean has been two hundred sixty-eight thousand, I think, um. For the past five years, we've, we've exceeded that mean, I believe. Um, so we do pretty good with collections, but we estimate and we predicate a budget on a two hundred and forty thousand dollars. A year in fee collections.
But we've already budgeted three hundred and five thousand.
Yeah, and when we have that, that, we have that non-reverting amount that, that stays, but.
It's eating into the balance.
Yeah, eventually it's gonna zero out at, at undetermined point in the future, we could probably figure out exactly when that.
That's why I've been keeping it close, that's why I've been keeping it close, because as the benefits increase, our bottom line is decreasing, and that's why we're bringing it to your attention now. Cause it's just continually going.
Operating balance is three hundred grand and that's funded at all times, basically, that's the goal.
The goal is to keep an operating balance, yes, because if we, like I said, if we have a bad year of collections, then I don't have a operating balance. Kind of like what you guys do with your ballot, your budget, you have that operating balance there.
Do we determine the fees or are those determined at the state level, state level?
That's for us.
Is that, yeah, that's you.
I'm gonna go on record, say that I, I personally think. Jeff answers one of the best that we have in, in the county, so I'm glad here that you're gonna say it all that, don't go too much.
Now, he's doing a really good job.
And generally, it's against what I. I, to stay consistent, I, yeah, my principle generally don't, uh, reach to any increase in salary that's outside of budget time. Um, for this minimal two hundred fifty-nine dollars and the fact that, um, you know, the way that, uh. Jeff takes ten minutes to explain it, I think, uh, I'm just kidding. Uh, it, it's probably, um, unreasonable and, and I, if he's saying that, that's what we need to. We all be on the same page with that, I can get behind that. I think you guys are doing a great job, I think you got a great team behind you and, uh, I have no objection to it.
Thank you. Any additional questions?
Yes, I have one, will be per, and like the lines have to be adjusted.
We always have a, a ten percent buffer because of any increases, so it should be enough there for that little bit of a money.
Thank you. I'll be clear too, that the, uh, the, the judge is coming to us asking about judicial lit. Uh, even though probation falls on.
But they don't, because it's very specific on judicial lit for court, court, assistant court, court of bail, court of men. So I have a couple employees in the court that don't qualify under that, so probation is not, cost does not. So this does not qualify under judicial lit. Probation support staff would not qualify under judicial, judicial lit.
I think that's really a moot point at this point for just salary study, I don't know how we deviate from that, but if we can get into that conversation. So your.
Probation officer, the salaries are.
Probation officers are mandated, the support staff is determined.
That's the point, local. Look like there's something different when you come to us before. We gave you an extra person last year, didn't we? Yeah, it's not working out.
Yeah, very well, uh, uh, it certainly took a lot of pressure off our juveniles department, uh, she, uh. Amber is her name, has been, uh, working, you know, in that role since, uh, the beginning of the year. And has, uh, really offered a very good pressure relief valve off. The juvenile department that was experiencing, you know, a lot of pressure here lately, cause we're doing a lot of, a lot of confluence and different factors coming together. Create kind of a, a problems with, uh, young people in the community these days, mental health being a huge issue, um. Some of the things that happened with, uh, the Y O C in terms of their capacity and so forth, so, uh. It's very much held offset in triage, yeah, uh, taking a full caseload and helping away, so, uh.
And then just FYI, you'll see this next month, we did get a new probation officer to a grant, which is the first time we've ever got a probation officer. To a grant for juvenile department, so we're starting to build that up.
Yeah, so, so we're still in a capacity building mode, I mean, these things take time, obviously, to, to scale up your department, get things where they need to be, but, uh. You know, there's different pieces, uh, council, grant funding from the state, um, actually reassigned an adult officer out to juvenile probation this year as well, so. Um, so we've, we're, we utilize all the tools in our toolbox.
Good job, thanks.
Anything else? Are you done? Roll call please.
It's flagging, yes. Use, no. Dance, yes. It's okay, yes. Web, yes. Web, yes. Sniper, yes.
Thank you. Alright. Juvenile detention alternative initiative grant, nine one oh seven. Two twenty operating supplies, three thousand five hundred. Three eleven contractual services, forty-one thousand five hundred. Three twenty-one food and lodging, seven thousand nine hundred. Three twenty-three transportation, three thousand six hundred. Three sixty-two repairs and maintenance software, five thousand one hundred, for a total of sixty-one thousand six hundred.
Make a motion to approve.
Uh, we had to change the fund number, did you catch that?
Yeah, with a dollar and all, it's like nowhere near enough either. Says you got seventeen thousand in there and you ask them for sixty-one thousand.
We have a quarterly payment that's, that's done at the beginning.
Hold on a moment, please, do we have a second yet?
We do not have a second yet, up, sorry. By, to Eugene, Ryan, Ryan, second by Eugene.
So first of all, we had to change it back to ninety-one oh seven, I wanna explain, oh, no, that's just a motion, just a motion of second, no, we can just kinda solve them. Yep, so I wanna explain the change in number. Every year, they get this fund, this grant. And they have to change the number every year. Why? Don't know, that's the, that's what, what has to be done. So it's ninety-one oh seven, so make that clear, it's ninety-one oh seven, first of all.
Grant number.
Grant number ninety-one oh seven, they have to switch between the two. Um, secondly, they get a quarter of the whole entire fund initially, and then they get payments every month deposited for twelve months. So the whole payment is not there currently.
So basically, you're saying even though it's sixty-one thousand, they're only gonna be doing like fifteen thousand, two hundred fifty-eight per quarter?
No, they get the quarter down, and then each month they get a monthly payment, I think it's like five thousand dollars each month, which adds up to the sixty-one.
Okay.
Correct. They give you the quarter upfront and then monthly give you a, a monthly payment for the twelve months.
So that's seventeen thousand, three hundred forty-three, is that enough for the quarter and?
And then they'll get a monthly payment each month after that.
But is it enough, that monthly payment, to cover the monthly payments until the other?
Yes, because it's all programming, so they're gonna keep track of what they spend and not spend over that first initial payment and what they, what they have coming in. So it's not like they have salaries coming out or anything like that, it's all programming. We can do this for grants, grants are the exception to the rule when it comes to the.
So they really can't pay what they don't have, right?
Correct.
Okay, alright, I got you. But in ninety-one oh seven, there's only four hundred dollars. In ninety-one oh nine, there's seventeen, three forty-three.
So the ninety-one oh nine is leftover, ninety-one oh seven, she just fixed, so I don't know if you have that new amount. She just corrected.
This was the thing you gave her.
Yeah, that wouldn't be right. That's why it gets confusing, cause you have the one and you have to get the other and switch back and forth.
So is this using all the money out of ninety-one oh nine?
The ninety-one oh nine is what they have to, I don't know what that is, they have to finish up using this year. And then ninety-one oh seven starts now, so they should have used up all of that, the ninety-one oh nine should be used up. There was, there might have been a few dollars that were reverted back to state, but they should have used the majority of it.
Okay. Outside the fund and they just got diseased with the numbers. Can, can you tell me what the contractual services are, the three eleven, that's forty-one thousand five hundred?
Is that, no.
Yeah, so, no, a lot, a large portion of that is paying for juvenile electronic monitoring to, to organic community corrections. Um, then, uh, the additional, uh. Training, it's like conferences and trainings and stuff like that, they have the, uh, different things, the support services and social work. Um, probation also.
She has her own software.
Yeah, that's a specialized software we use for data reporting, um, without looking at really the line items, uh, equipment as well. Computers, we're able to purchase computers out of this grant, different things like that, um.
Operating supply, I think are.
Yeah, operating supplies, uh, would be, um. Just more for your typical operating supplies, probably, I think there may be a mileage component out of that as well. Uh, some of the things they do, electronic learning, like I mentioned, then there's different events in the probation world, we call them pro-central activities. So to kind of divert kids out of just running the streets and, you know, you kind of focus, a lot of things we've done, we've hosted. Lot of events with, uh, like, uh, two-day swims with, uh, enforcement, teen juvenile skating parties. Uh, different, uh, uh, community groups that, uh, working with youth, we kind of utilize the grant funds as a pass-through to. You know, if they need t-shirts for their kids or, um, you know, kind of fund, uh, we funded, uh, uh. College visits for kids in the past, uh, youth lessons, music equipments, and another thing, we pay also for, um. Driving lessons at Jumper's Driving Academy for some of these kids, they get, they never have a chance to. Go out and learn how to get a driver's license, and your family doesn't have a car. Um, you know, and it's a way to keep them from ending up, uh, in the criminal justice system, if they get pulled over driving without a license, we try to help them. Actually get a valid license so they can kind of follow the rules and stay out of trouble and things like that, so, uh, a lot of it's used for kind of. Community stuff, uh, preventative things, and then also the GPS monitoring, the biggest lion's share out of that. So the food and lodging and transportation, would that be the, like, college visits or is that probation officer doing that? That would be, uh, folks that are, that are connected with us, they're a pretty big group of individuals that are connected with J D I locally. Uh, you know, nonprofits, uh, network, uh, community members, faith-based organizations. Uh, it's a pretty big tent, uh, so, uh, we bring those folks in, some of that's utilized, uh, different meetings, you know. We might have lunch for people to come in and have a meeting, uh, and it also might be.
Uh, and it also might be for probation officers or staff that go to conference, uh, off support services conference, Popeye Conference. Every other year, the state has the, the off support services has a J D I conference, things like that, so.
Thank you for explaining. Where's that money come from?
It's from the off support services, the state.
State, state fund.
And so you get a certain percentage of that, or do you have to apply?
We have to apply every year.
We have to apply every year and, uh, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a grant we get, uh, usually around fifty five thousand dollars every year, so it's, it's a. Pretty good, pretty good grant, pretty cheap life for.
She applied for six, she applied for more.
Yeah, they have a matrix, like, if you've done these things, you're eligible for up to seventy or seventy five. If you've done these things, you can get fifty five. Uh, so there is some, you know, they have some requirements in terms of, uh, your operations, like how, if you qualify for it, how much you qualify for it. Based on what you've just said, it seems like it'd be difficult if you get a, um, fifty five thousand dollar budget. To, to reach a milestone of seventy five thousand, because you never get the seventy five thousand dollars to utilize. Yeah, it's, it, it's one of those things that we see this all the time with different grants, you know, certain jurisdictions that. Uh, and I always pick old Hamilton County, uh, because they're probably, you know, they're getting it, they're able to get the seventy five thousand, because they have the capacity. Internally to, you know, go after the grants and meet all the requirements and all of that, so we do the best we can. I have one staff at juvenile. That she kind of, as a, as a part of her role, is she manages and does all this with the grant, she does an awesome job with it. Because if there is a lot of requirements.
Yeah, that discussion you just spoke of, Hamilton County gets the whole seventy five, we don't. Is any of that tied to, maybe they have a full-time grant writer and we have our.
There, there you go. We have employees writing and applying.
Probably.
It, it's, I mean, it's a matter of capacity, just being able to do those sorts of things. Um, and we talked about that last year, grant writer and stuff that we need to get learned, yeah. Uh.
Well, you have the capacity to run a program too.
We just, I mean, you run into that, to that, we run into that in a lot of different areas, grants, uh, say like the field unit, I referenced earlier. Old funded, you know, jurisdictions, they have this field unit, and they're able to kind of just be out and, you know, inter, and so there's, there's a lot to that. You know, we may not have that, but we can be smart with things, and if we kind of manage things a little better and just more efficient, then. Make those things maybe happen, but, uh, we need to, again, this is another tool, our toolkit, this is fifty five thousand dollars a year we wouldn't get otherwise. Um, and it really helps kids in the community, and, you know, especially, I'm especially proud of the relation building piece between. Youth and law enforcement in the community, where they are able to interact in appropriate venues, and it's not just always when something's happening. And, you know. Emotions are high and, you know, stuff like that, so I think it's really helped, we've done this the past several years, and I think it's really helped. And, you know, to some degree in the community in keeping things kind of down in terms of, uh. The community's reaction to certain things, they have stuff like that. They haven't really been experiencing so much here as maybe smaller jurisdictions. Uh, so I think it's a net benefit for sure. Equipment, personal video, contractual services, in place. Uh, that would be, uh, payment for GPS monitoring with, uh, community corrections, which would be, that's, uh, I think it's around twelve, fifteen thousand dollars a year. Uh, there's a bit, uh, that we host, uh, to, you know, buy out to the pool for a day for, uh, kid.
Check for the t-shirts and, uh.
Yeah, yeah, uh, uh, yeah, uh.
Eating party.
Yeah, that, and, uh, there's another, oh, oh, uh, the, uh, drivers ed scholarships we give. We use, uh, Jumper's Driving Academy, uh, where we allow kids to do that, and then we've done some, we have the post department, Lancy City Post Department. They have a, uh, programming that we help, uh, augment funding for that out of this grant. Yeah, but again, it's like somebody's got to go out and knock on doors and go see people, and, and so there, there's a development piece that would be great, like a, you know. We're working on it, and like, like I said, we have a pretty big tent. There's a lot of community members that are, you know, active, they're involved, and wanting to help. Kids and get them devoted off the path towards further involvement in criminal justice system or getting more involved. Um, we work with all those community partners, uh, pretty extensively. Funding is probably always the biggest challenge.
I'm a juvenile care.
Yeah. We'd love to have it come out, uh, I'll be sure to invite you all to our next meeting, you know, please come. You'll see, like, there's, there's a lot of good things in all of the community. I'm pretty optimistic. It just takes time to develop these things out. Um, and that's. Problems are kind of less. More capacity, there's more need to see the kids, the relationships, everything.
Of you, if we wanna go through, I can read. So on, I don't know if you guys kept the slips I made from last meeting, but for the Muncie Public Library, we had four individuals. Who sought to serve on the Muncie Public Library. I believe we all received a letter uh from the library director, Alan Formblaw. Hope I pronounced that correctly. Um, this was received back in May. I will read it out loud. Alright, great. Let me, um, do you want me to read your letter? Would you like to speak on behalf or both? Okay. The Delaware County Council makes two appointments to the Muncie Public Library Board of Trustees. Current Muncie Public Library Board of Trustees members appointed by the Delaware County Council are. Olin Dotson and Billy Shepherd, having expressed interest in continuing their service for another four-year term. Beginning Saturday, June first, twenty twenty-four. Olin Dotson is completing a term that was vacated. He serves on the House and Finance Committee and his knowledge of architecture has proven invaluable for the Muncie Public Library with the restoration work of our Carnegie Library. In addition, Olin has been elected to the Board of Directors of Indiana Landmarks. Billy Shepherd is in her third four-year term and serves as the Chair of the House and Finance Committee. Billy is also a past president of our Board of Trustees. Olin Dotson and Billy Shepherd are active community leaders with strong commitments to the Muncie Public Library and its mission to provide accessible. And innovative services to our community. It is our request that the Delaware County Council approve their reappointments to the Muncie Public Library Board of Trustees for additional term. Please don't hesitate to contact. So hey, we'll let you come up if you want anything else you'd like to share with us or.
Alan Formblaw, Muncie Public Library Director, um, these are two well-known, um, board members, uh, they've done a lot for the library. Uh, Olin's working, uh, as the, um, as Piper said, on the Carnegie Library Restoration Project. He's a, a professor at Ball State University, uh, Billy Shepherd's been active in the community and a past president, so. Uh, they're two outstanding folks and have done great work for the library and would like to continue that.
Yeah, so, so is it, can you tell me then, is it just two names?
No, we have four names. So those are the two that, um. Have been, are the current appointments that are seeking reappointment. So Olin Dotson. And Billy Shepherd.
And then one of the other two.
We have Dennis Everett. Um, Dennis admitted, my name is Dennis Everett, I'm the Director of the Library at Ivy Tech's Downtown Muncie Campus. I would like to be considered for a position on the Board of the Muncie Public Library. I'm not affiliated with a political party in Indiana. I hold a Master of Information Resources and Library Sciences from the University of Arizona. I worked for NPL for nine years, twenty fourteen through twenty twenty-three, and I love doing that kind of work for the community. In early twenty twenty-four, I moved to the Ivy Tech, to Ivy Tech, where I oversee the library. I would be very interested in doing what I can to help, uh, NPL be all the better for the people of Muncie. I've always considered librarians are the best option to serve on library boards, and I'm ready to serve. The other person, her name is Jessica Schraut. She submitted, um, I'd like to present myself at consideration. Qualifications, uh, include her service as a President of the Board of Directors for Women in Business Unlimited. And as the new board appointment for the Indiana State Chapter of Gift and Adoption, Gift of Adoption. Uh, she's an independent voter, but since a lean Democrat. So our four candidates for Muncie Public Library are Dr. Ol- Olin Dotson, who is a current appointment. Dennis Everett. Billy Shepherd, who is also a current appointment. And Jessica Schraut.
If, I may just say one thing about, uh, Mr. Everett, he's a former employee that was, uh, let go from the library last year, so. Well, I've been at the library four months now, um, so we're working on that, we're receiving, uh, uh, grants, but, uh. Uh, to do some restoration inside, uh, if those bids were too high, we're gonna have to rebid. But then, uh, we're also looking at, uh, using money that we have in reserves to get the whole project done next year, it'll be our hundred and fiftieth anniversary. So, uh, we really wanna fast track all this work on the Carnegie Library, but it needs a lot of work, interior and some exterior work.
Are all these Delaware County residents?
Muncie residents.
Muncie residents? We are due, um, answer to the question if it has to be politically balanced or anything.
I don't believe that this one has to, but we have, I believe that Dr. Dotson and Billy both are Ds. And the other two did not have a party affiliation.
And yeah, and is it, um, when we make these appointments, is it two per position? I know we're talking about one right now, but it.
We have, we get to pick two, we're selecting two.
For, for one, it's two, two.
For this four, for the Muncie Public Library, we make two appointments, so you're gonna pick your top two.
First of all, I'd like to say, could you pronounce your last name again? It's Formblaw, as my wife says, it rhymes with plow. First, I wanna, um, say I appreciate you coming up here, uh, presenting yourself today. A lot of the time when, uh, this council does boarding committee appointments. Uh, a lot of people don't show up, you know, whether it be. The, the people who are seeking reappointment, or the person overseeing the board, the president of the board committee. So first of all, I wanna say thank you for coming, that, that's, that's a, that's a big deal. I just wanted to take a quick second, if I could. I wanted to put it out there and explain why I voted no to take it off the table. Because I do believe we need to make these appointments, uh, we had had some discussion last month. These same things, the same seats came up for appointment last month. And, uh, I had made a motion to table because my objection was, per our council rules that we've adopted. When we seek out boarding committee appointments, we're supposed to make a public notification, uh, two months prior to the appointment. We're supposed to include the boards that are open, um, for appointment, and we're supposed to include a description of what those boarding committee seats. Uh, what their job functions are, what requirements are for anyone. And the public who, um, wants to get involved in the community, maybe they don't wanna run for public office, but they wanna get involved somehow. These boarding committees are a great way to do it. And in the past, what we've had is, most people don't get that information, um, and that's when we run into. Uh, I'm sure they do great jobs, but we get, um, members who've had to serve two, three, four terms. And, and my personal position is, thank you so much for your service, we appreciate every bit of it. But I like, kinda like making, um, making opportunities for everybody who, who wanna get involved. So I voted, um, and brought up the, the motion to table that last month. Uh, my objection and why I wanted to keep it on the table this month is, I still don't believe we've met those requirements of publicly notifying. Uh, we did talk about it in this public meeting, but we did not make, um, the social media. On our county Facebook page, uh, notification to everyone that these are the positions that are open if you want to. Submit your name for consideration. We've also not listed what those requirements are. So if you're a citizen at home and you wanna be a part of one of these boards and committees, you don't know what the hell they do. We, we've not put that out there. In fact, I just received it myself yesterday, uh, one of the council members apparently asked ChatGPT. Uh, I didn't even know if to take that serious, but apparently that was real. Uh, ChatGPT wrote up the description of what these boarding committee seats do. So, uh, if we don't know, and we're just finding out yesterday, and we have to ask ChatGPT to tell us what it is. And how in the world is some citizen sitting at home who wants to get involved supposed to know, uh, whether they're qualified for this position or not? So I just wanted to take a second and publicly put it on the record, for my objection as to why I voted to take it off the table. I think we should have left it on the table until those requirements were met per our own council members. But thank you for coming, sir.
Alright, do you have any additional comments? Alright, so again, we're gonna pick two. We'll do a roll call, pick your two appointments. Again, we have, uh, the current appointments of Dotson and Shepherd. And then Dennis Everett and Jessica Schraut. Uh, roll call please.
I can. Uh, keep it the same with Olin and Dotson, excuse me, Olin Dotson and Billy Shepherd. Just use Dotson and Shepherd. Mr. Mokel, Dotson, Shepherd. Mr. Mokel. I like change. Let's go with Everett and Schraut. Play it. Dotson and Everett. Dance. Dotson and Schraut.
Barbara. Dotson and Shepherd. Congratulations, you retain your board. Alright, moving on to the Civic Center Authority Board. Which reminds me, um, after last month's meeting, it was brought to my attention that council does not receive. Not everyone in the council has been receiving the county council distribution list email. So I emailed Jim during, actually during our meeting, to ask that we all be included and, uh. He has assured me that all of council will now be receiving those, apparently it was just Jim and myself.
I've never received those in the entire four years.
But Jim messaged all of us, and I saw Ryan actually responded back thanking him for that, so, um, that has been addressed and taken care of. So on behalf of, uh. The CEO and President of the Horizon Convention Center, we received the following for, uh, the current appointments of. Mary Ann Cradaville and myself. Uh, Joanne sent in, I am writing to let you know you have two upcoming appointments to the Delaware County Civic Center Authority Board. The authority who oversees the food and beverage tax in Delaware County, which is a dedicated tax for the bond capital purchasing. And a portion of the operation of the Horizon Convention Center. Those two terms are ending July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Uh, Jessica Piper, President, Mary Ann Cradaville, Treasurer. Both have served as officers, are signers on the bank account. And have shown great interest in the Horizon Convention Center in building economic development in Muncie and Delaware County. Our staff and I have enjoyed working with both professionals, and we would very much like to them, like them to continue doing a great work for Civic Center Authority. Joanne McKenney, President and CEO. Our third nominee is Amber Green, she submitted, I currently serve on the Delaware County Redevelopment Commission. And I think the Civic Center Authority Board would be another great opportunity to apply my knowledge and talents. My experience managing the finances of the Redevelopment Commission and experience in large-scale event planning. And management from prior professional history, I believe would be a benefit to this board. I take any public service seriously and will do extensive research regarding anything that should come before me as a member of this board. As a citizen of Delaware County, the importance of the Convention Center and what an asset it is to our community is not lost on me. And I would love the opportunity to work alongside those that have made it what it is today. Uh, Amber's here, do you want to add anything else, or? You're here, it's up to you. I'll just reiterate what Jessica read, um, I do have prior event planning and management skills from my professional history. And I do think the Convention Center is a huge asset to our community, I would like to see it become a little bit bigger. Um, essentially, I feel like if you're sitting on that board, you need to be selling our community to use the Convention Center to the best of its abilities. And I believe that I have the skills and talents to do that, so I would appreciate your consideration. Alright, do you have any other questions about this board?
No, but let me read this, uh, that you sent out relative to the Indiana Code. So it's a nine-member board, appointed as follows, four members appointed by the executive of the largest municipality in the county, it would be Muncie. Three members appointed by the county executive body, who are the commissioners. And two members appointed by the county fiscal body, which is the county council. No more than five members of the Civic Center Authority may be affiliated with the same political party, all members must reside in the county. The term of the authority is two years. Um, subsequent appointments shall be for two years. Vacancy shall be filled within expired term by the authority that made the prior appointment. Permanent vote of five members of the authorities required. Um, do we know the total makeup of the body?
Our two appointments are Republicans, and all three who were up for nomination are Republicans. And I believe the mayor has, two of his are Democrat appointments. I haven't heard of them, just to hear them are Democrats. Another thing we need to tidy up on the spreadsheet.
Do we know how many years each, uh, these people have served?
Mary Ann has been our treasurer for. A while. She knows all the things fiscal, she's been on our bank account for as long as she's been on the board, so she's served in that capacity. I don't know when she came on, she was there when I joined. I believe. I came in, uh, in August of twenty twenty. Alright, so we have two appointments, again, the options are Green, Cradaville, and Piper. Roll call please.
I can. Uh, I'm gonna go with Jess- Jessica and Mary Ann. Just use. I'd like to have three appointments. Green and Piper. Mr. Mokel. Cradaville and Piper. Swab, I'm gonna go with Amber Green and Mary Ann Cradaville. Play it. Cradaville and Piper. Dance. Piper and Green. And Piper.
Uh, Mary Ann Cradaville and Jessica Piper. So the CCA board appointments will stay with the current, uh, appointments. Alright, and thank you to all of those who put your names in, I know it's, uh. It's to Ryan's point earlier, we do have a lot of room for opportunity of better communication. And as I mentioned last month, the spreadsheet that we get from the Order's Office. Doesn't really provide us any details of anything, I don't even know that we have all of the director contact information. So we're not, not gonna work on cleaning that up, uh, moving forward, and then that way too, we'll have a better, um. Idea of like an explanation for each of these boards for our, I believe we'll have to have those in September to do our vote in November. I believe is what our rule state for the rest of the boards.
We vote in November or December?
Is it December? So then we get it in October? Okay. So now we've got a work cut out for us? Alright, so the next is a committee appointment, it's the Transp- Transportation Policy Committee. Um, this one I was not aware of, we didn't have, um. Any information on this in our spreadsheet, that this was a, a appointment that we needed to make, um.
And this is a council member?
It must be a council member. So the Transportation Policy Committee, Ballard was our last appointment, so we have not had someone in quite a while. Um, it helps to set transportation goals for the metropolitan area. Its code is twenty-three C F R four fifty, subpart C. They meet the third Wednesday of every month at one thirty PM, and Kylie is here probably very excited to get an appointment finally. So I did start sending in, um, of Kylie Swatkimer from the Plan Commission. I did start sending in this information, um, February, I think was the first time I sent it in. Um, I know we've had some staff turnover everywhere, so that was probably why you hadn't received it yet, maybe, um. I did send in the bylaws, the schedule, to give you guys information about that committee.
I have a quick question, can you read some of that? Should Ballard, is, is, so has Ballard actively been on the committee, or we just had a, had a position?
Uh, when I.
Cause he's been gone two years.
Yeah, when I started here, his name, that's the last name I could find, but ever since I, when I started here. I did attend these committee meetings with Marta, and there was never a representative from the county council. At any meeting I attended.
And I believe you're waiting for the commissioners too, right?
Um, we do have a commissioner on the committee.
Yes, I'm trying to figure out how we just stopped getting to it. Like, how did everybody notice that there was a committee member missing for two years?
Well, we did have, I mean, Marta passed away and that kind of threw everything in a tizzy when it's not expected. Yeah, there's several, and on that committee, there's several vacancies. Um, so in the bylaws, I have, we have kind of, this one hasn't been voted on yet, but we're adjusting to kind of. Count for some of those vacancies, we have, a lot of these small towns have vacancies, there's a seat for. Thelma, there's a seat for Albany, there's a seat for Eaton, there's a seat for Chamber of Commerce that had, that unfilled. Um, so I did kind of, we are addressing some of those in our, in changes to our bylaw. Of how we reach out and try to fill those vacancies. Um, so that's why, when I took the position in January, um, after our first meeting, I did start reaching out to try to get those filled.
What do you do, if there's, I mean, bad all these vacancies, what are you guys doing?
Uh, we have nine, nine current members that sit on there, um. They oversee a lot of the, um, runnings of the MPO side of the Plan Commission Office. So that is the side that deals with all the transportation. Um, they oversee the allocations that we receive from state and federal, um, to disperse throughout our county. Um, we disperse funds to the city, we disperse funds to the county, we disperse funds to Yorktown. Um, anyone that applies for those funds. Um, we have a budget of, we get about three point seven million dollars a year to pass out to those entities. Um, and it is an eighty-twenty dispersment. So those entities do have to match with a twenty percent, but they get that eighty percent to then put towards road projects. Bridge projects, things like that.
They're also reporting requirements back to the state and federal, that's what I know.
Yes, yes.
This is a federal committee, this is required by the Federal Highway Department, correct?
This is required through NDOT and the Federal Highway Administration, yes.
Federal, that explains why no one noticed it.
Foreign MPO, foreign MPO. And we are one of fourteen MPOs in Indiana, so. It is available the third Wednesday at one thirty PM. And the time can be, I mean, we can, we can approach the time with the board, um, it. Yeah, we do, it is a Zoom, it's a hybrid, so you can attend in person or you can Zoom it to. Um, you can appoint a proxy if needed beforehand, um. The time could be, could be addressed, um, it's just at one thirty because that's how it was set. That's how it was, so we just kept it, but that could be addressed if needed. It's a challenge sometimes in the afternoon, considering all of us, except for Bill had the privilege of being retired. A full-time job, so.
Be a good representative of the council. I was thinking Mr. J.
Every other month, it's not every month, it's every other month.
Tell me, William, you get, um, you indicate federal funds from what, gasoline tax? So what word is the federal gonna come up with this money?
Um, so, so this would be, honestly, it, it is allocated for the MPOs. So it is a set budget each year that is distributed through the MPOs based on our population. Um, oh, there's a formula, but it's, the main thing is the population of your, of your area. Um, I do not know where it comes from, um, I just know that. Yeah, the MPOs are, are allocated this money, um, if you don't use it, you lose it. But you have that each, each year to use, um, and then we do our, um, our, one of our core documents is our tip. So that's our Transportation Improvement Plan, and that has all the projects listed in it, it does have to be fiscally constrained. We do have to have that, those projects planned out for the next four years. Um, you can obviously make adjustments and amendments to that when needed. Um, some projects come in way over bid, some are eligible, prices go up, prices go down. So this polit- or this committee does kind of have to look at those things and approve, oh. Some of their normal business is approving those changes and amendments to our documents, so.
I'm so curious, um, about how your department runs, where the monies come from, how it's spent.
And we're trying to prepare.
I haven't, I haven't nominated, Mr. Mokel.
Alright, so I got a nomination for Jim from Ryan, second by Was That Matter Bill? Yes, we do have a MITS, a MITS representative.
But is, is MITS funded out of this, out of the?
Um, they are, they, there's, their monies are separate from the, that three point seven. Um, but yes, they do have a, a budget that they can work with each, each year. Um, and for instance, like, they came to us and needed more this, this previous year. Um, if it's in our budget and we have it left over and are going to lose it, we were able to, like last year, we were able to move fifty thousand dollars over to MITS. So that they could cover one of their transportation programs, so.
Alright, roll call on Jim being our committee appointment for the Transportation Policy Committee.
I can, yes, tease, yes, Swab, yes, Swab, absolutely, Swab. Play it. The cats, yes, Piper.
Yes. And, and thank you. It is as long as you are on county council. Forever, Jim, forever, uh, or until you.
And so you'll send me?
I will send you, I will send you information, um, and then you can. You know, I'll answer any questions you have, and we can even meet before it can to go over a few things, and kind of a little orientation if you'd like. And just so you guys know, we are working really hard on getting kind of a little presentation ready for you about our budget, because we are learning a lot. Um, I still think of our office as three different parts. All three different budgets are different, monies come from different places, monies are reimbursed differently. So we kinda wanna educate you guys on how our budget works, because we're realizing it is a lot different than any of the other offices. I'm gonna count, right, so.
Ellie, I appreciate, appreciate you coming up here today with, um, giving your presentation. I would encourage, um, I don't know if you're representing them here today, so I don't know if you're representing them at all times. But I would encourage the board to seek out those other open positions and get them filled as soon as possible.
Yes, we have, um, we actually recently got, um, Eaton filled. And we had a new member from the Eaton Town Board, um, that I emailed back and forth with. He said, I'll be there, he didn't show up at our meeting this month, so.
So what are their requirements, cause our requirement, setting up a council member, these, these openings you have, how, like, is it, any citizens can reach out to you? Or do they have to be a representative of, like, the town?
Yes, they would have to have, the, if the town board, the county council, the, the. The body that is over them would have to appoint someone, yes.
Okay, so anybody's watching from these surrounding towns, the town boards, they need somebody to fill this box.
So we recen- we recently filled Eaton, and then I have been in contact with someone from Gaston. That is supposed to be getting back to me on a Gaston representative as well.
Can you repeat those openings again?
Um, as far as I can, Chamber of Commerce, um, Albany, Thelma. Um, like I said, I'm working on Gaston. And I believe that's it.
Chamber Board President.
Oh, uh, City Council, it's on their agenda as well, city, um, City Council has a council member.
Right, as well, right, but it's been on their agenda. Hopefully we'll be able to get your board filled for you.
Yes, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Let somebody call Ballard, let him know he's out.
Uh, I don't believe we have any old business, and then on new business, I did have something, um, come to my attention. There's an opportunity for us to have like a, you know, we have our liaison list, having one for EDA, like an Economic Development Agreement. Liaison to, like, when those come before the commissioners, actually have a representative from council, be present. To be part of those conversations, or be included, um, just moving forward, and, uh, I guess it'd be a liaison role of sorts. Um, I don't know if anyone's interested in that, but in talking, I've been and mentioned it to me and.
I agree that I, maybe Bill might be a great fit to be a liaison in that role. And he has a really good understanding since we're throwing everyone out there today, Bill. I think you'd be great. Um. To sit in a position like that, just with your, your legal background and, and knowledge of these types of uh. Agreements, but I'd be open to any other council member who might have. That much, yeah.
By way of background, this is based off of a conversation I had with Daniel Struble on behalf of the county commissioners and. Not to rehash lots of things, but given, given the concerns that were expressed by the council um over some of the E D As for. Not some, the E D A for the, the one in particular, solar project. Uh, they thought it might be wise to make sure the council is involved in any future type of E D A development and. In a meeting that Danielle Struble and I had, we discussed it and said we, we agreed that it'd probably be a good idea for the council to just appoint somebody that would be. The go-between that would then take part in and then could then inform the rest of you on those discussions. Um, so that there wouldn't be, uh. You, you wouldn't be kept in the dark and or there wouldn't be any uh unintentional misunderstandings about where they're coming from and, and, and how those things go. And we both agreed that, sorry, Bill, but we both agreed that Bill Hughes would be a great choice, given that he's also. Uh, chairs the Tax Abatement Committee and then for all the reasons that Jessica discussed. Well, that might, that might come both ways, maybe. As chair of the Tax Abatement Committee, maybe I wouldn't do that one.
Uh, uh, having a Economic Development Agreement Liaison to work with the commissioners to discuss any deals that may. Come down the pipeline in the future just to prevent, you know, the misunderstanding and confusion that occurred. Uh, with this last one.
I think that would be an excellent selection, if he can swing it.
Uh, you pick zero, but it's only going to be when there are. International E D As.
So rather than three E D U projects specifically, that is just kind of.
I agree with Bill, I think that. The chair of the Tax Abatement Committee might not be the appropriate person to have as this liaison. You guys are running out of. Guys are running out, cause I'm, I'm leaving, so. And uh, it's only as needs as needed, correct?
Yeah.
So. I would be willing to be that liaison.
Alright, Eugene.
How about Eugene?
Alright. Motion for Eugene to serve on our E D A came from Ryan. And a second was from Bill or Dan?
Thank you, Eugene.
Thank you. Uh, roll call, please.
As I am, yes, it's she is, yes, it's possible, yes, it's web, yes. Yes. Yes, yes.
Yes. Awesome, thank you. And now elected officials and department heads, do we have anyone? Sheriff? We've been waiting for this one.
Sheriff, that is. I have the same paper twice. About one year later. What should be your fault, what should be your responsibility? I have the income. Thank you. So Tony Skinner, Bill, we're kind of sure, first of all, can I make sure everybody received the commissary report via email? Last week, okay. If you have any questions about that this week, just after the meeting. Um. And I passed out today is the uh, the, the meal cost. I do this. Uh, twice a year for you, just to recap what we're spending in the jail um, on food. Uh, in the first six months of this year, we served two hundred and forty-three thousand, uh, six hundred and sixty-three meals. That was up forty percent from the same time last year. Um, but. Good for us, uh, good for you, is the meal, the cost per meal, uh, one year ago was a dollar eighty-nine. Uh, this year it's a dollar sixty-one. Uh, it's not because the economy's getting better, it's because our head major, Dawn Johnson, um. Has done a great job of uh sourcing food from different uh vendors. And also last year, uh, we were down to cook, so we were spending a lot more money in overtime. So that's the reason that costs went down, so kudos to Dawn for. Uh, the hard work that she's done in the kitchen. Um, you have any questions about this? Um, I, I highlighted on there that, uh, we're spending a lot of money right now for some. For some reason, we can't figure it out, on kosher meals. So, uh, you know, inmates have a. Uh, the right to, you know, request to, um. No pork for religious or kosher or whatever, um, so. For kosher meals, we're getting those from a commissary vendor at the cost of four dollars per meal. Uh, right now we have approximately twenty-seven inmates requesting kosher meals, so. Um, I can't explain it, they don't taste good, they're not, they're not any better than anything else, but I think they're just trying to be a pain in a.
Do those have to be prepared in a kosher kitchen?
Uh, they are prepared from a.
And then they're just ready to serve?
They come prepackaged, yes, yes, so they are, they are the real.
Ready to go.
Yep. They're just expensive. Uh, the next page, um, is the jail-related income, uh, for the first six months of this year. You can see we're bringing in money, a little bit from Marion County, a little bit from Madison County. Um, the third one, the D O C, the, the county felons, uh, those are, those are people that are. Convicted and sentenced to prison, but they're still being housed here because the Indiana Department of Corrections doesn't have room for them. So we bill, we bill for those. Uh, we also make money housing, um, temporary housing people for parole. Um, the big one obviously is the federal inmates. We've made three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars in the first six months this year from federal inmates. And then uh, the last one is the reimbursement for. Miles, uh, part-time help from uh, the federal grant for, for those transports. So all told, uh, for the first six months of this year, our jail has generated six hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in income. We're on pace to do about one point three million this year. Um, I would be remiss if I didn't reiterate. All of this comes with the hard work of our corrections officers, all of it. And uh, in about six weeks, all of us are going to be standing here at this podium again, asking you for raises and telling you why. You know, we deserve this or that or the other. Um, first and foremost, has to come public safety. And uh, I think the jail employees have to be at the top of that list. And if you have any questions about that, just look straight down and look at that piece of paper that I just gave you. Anybody have any questions about that? What's uh, do you have any vacancy in the jail? Got a spot for you, Jim? Um, we, we do our daily population this morning, I think we were at. Uh, three hundred and seventy-five-ish. Yeah, so, so I'm, I'm loving where our numbers are at right now. Um. Give a shout out to. Everybody in the justice system, the courts, the prosecutor, the public defenders, probation, um. Every, every, from my perspective. Everything is working right now when it comes to the, to the number of inmates that we're housing. Because as busy as they are with trials and, um, as backlog as the courts are, um. I'm just real happy where our numbers are at now. Right now, we're at, I think we're about forty-two federal inmates this morning. Um, so, I'm, I'm just real happy where we're at, but any of room for me, if that really. The, the contract that we, we negotiated has a maximum of fifty. Are you gonna reach that this year? I don't know, it's up to them. We don't, we don't determine that number. They'll call us and say, uh, we got one that needs picked up. Six o'clock tonight, but you have room. We have room. We have eight more beds. Designed for federal, can I, those beds be used for, they're, they're, they're all internealed. First comes, we don't have to, we don't have to isolate them, we don't have to segregate them, so they're all put together. I don't understand, again, your cost per meal, uh. You indicated, I think that, not part of that, was because you're buying differently. So what we have done for a long time before, we would pick a vendor. And we, we sourced almost all of our food from one vendor. And then it got to be like, why are you charging, I'll just make a number up, why are you charging four bucks for hamburgers and this guy's charging? You know, three eighteen. So now, we, we source food from ten different vendors. You know, if, if you're selling bread cheaper than that guy, we're gonna buy bread for you. You know, so, yeah. How often do you, you, you evaluate those contracts? They're not contracts, so they're just, you know, weekly, monthly? No, I don't think it's that often, but, but when it needs done. I mean, like last year, our food costs were getting pretty high, so we. Said, hey, something needs, we need to look around. It's kind of like when, when, um. Like your homeowners or your, your auto insurance, you know, sometimes when you look at it, you go, I think I'm paying way too much, I better start shopping. So it's not a set, a set time period. Does that make sense? Um, well, kudos for bringing that down in an environment where it seems like every week when I look at grocery store. It, and I'm paying a lot more.
Exactly, right.
How many employees are in the justice system? I don't know that, I just know, I know ours are. Actually seventy in the jail and forty-four in the, but I don't know the whole building. Emily, Emily might know that, or. Well, I, Pam, Pam might know that.
I guess I wouldn't. To crash and bust, we just answered.
Okay.
Buying bulk?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we've got, we've got a freezer, we've got a, a large walk-in refrigerator, and we have dry storage also, yeah, we buy in bulk. We have to, you know. A quarter million meals a year, we have to buy in bulk.
Do you have anything else for the sheriff?
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you. Do you have any other elected officials, department heads? Does not look like it. Do we have anyone sign up for public comment? Do we know? Anyone in here would like to speak?
Uh, comments from council. I'd just like to say congratulations to uh, everybody working on the fair, pulling off the fair and everybody who attended. Um. You know, towards the end of the week, they, they were putting them in the grandstands and uh. Get a lot of happy kids faces out there when I was out there, so congratulations to that and. All you kids, your summer has ended, get ready to go back to school. Another, another summer in the books, so I'm looking forward to getting started on school here when we come back here next month.
Crazy to think that it's like back to school here in a couple of weeks.
And I clicked in it. I'd like to reiterate the uh, the fair comment, it was very nice out there. I think the people have done a good job fixing up the fair, making it look a lot better than it used to be. And uh, working on things for him and get more interesting things out there. I think they're doing a good job.
Uh, one of the things that has recently come up, um, Matt and I attended the statewide county council training back in June. And our friends in some of the surrounding counties were showing us examples of different reports that they receive. Um, prior to their council meetings, and some of these are pretty extensive. Uh, Matt and I both geeked out over that kind of data, so Matt had been working with the auditor's office to try to get some additional information on. Revenues and what the balances are in some of these different departments. And the reason I bring this up is it came up during finance committee, um, which finance committee is a lot quicker now since we aren't doing the. Backfilling and we had fewer people in there, so I wanted to make sure I stated this out publicly and you can let all the other department heads know, but. During budget hearings, that'll be coming up in September. We're going to probably be doing a lot more digging into your revenue streams, so if you have revenue streams, be prepared to talk about those with us. Um, and we'll be supplemental funds, looking at the, the balances. Um, I know what gets printed in our book is the balance at the end of June. Uh, which by the time we start working on these in September, aren't always real close, and so we always, we always have questions about that. Um, so having some more real-time data available to us for that. Um, so just be prepared for those conversations, it's something we haven't done in the past. And you may find that our schedule gets dragged out over. Uh, maybe those first two days versus trying to push them all through that, that first day, so just a little heads up on that. Matt, do you have anything else?
No, thanks to you guys, uh, from the auditor's office and helping us try to get those done, so. Appreciate the, the statement reports, um. I didn't really get a chance to look at the revenue one, but we'll, we'll do that, I think. We may have to look at that and see if it's got any value, but we'll do that and. Yeah, relative to the budget book, I would love to see some tweaks to that for our first wave, particularly around balances from last year and. Um, those type of things, and I think they're gonna talk to me more about that, but. Appreciate it. Yeah, I would, I would reiterate about the department heads being just prepared to. Um. Which is, yeah, because I think our revenue allocations, I think are something we've maybe not addressed in a long time and. We need to look at that as much as, how much we're spending.
Is there one more thing? I just wanted to, I meant to mention this earlier, but I totally forgot, if you're a county employee. Sitting at your desk watching or anyone sitting in here and you're still concerned about salary study or whatever, we've actually got scheduled. We're gonna, when this meeting's over, we're gonna go in a room and for several hours and we're gonna hammer out some details and. Hopefully we'll have some more answers down the road, so just know that the council's still working on that stuff.
Well, to be clear, it's a work session about the job description specifically, not the, not the numbers, not the salaries.
Glad you had that.
I keep reiterating that, cause that's what the notice states, so we have to stick to that, and it's just going to be, and I did send out to the council of like a. Spreadsheet that had everything kind of broken down in one, or at least in one, like stop shopping versus having to go through all those pages, so. I mean, did receive that yesterday as well. Do we have anything else? There, no, entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Dan, second by Eugene, roll call, please.
As I am, yes, she is, yes, it's possible, yes, it's web, yes, it's web, yes, it's Piper.
Yes, and just a reminder, our next regular meeting is Tuesday, August twenty-seventh at nine A M. We'll see you then, we're adjourned, thank you.